Order, rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzy Rolcom.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeGore.
Here. Still on agenda for tonight with the regular and closed meeting minutes from June 19th.
On that motion. Discussion changes. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Shannon Kennedy with the Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce, 113 Riverwalk Plaza. I just want to say a thank you to everyone in this group for helping us to have a successful Riverwalk Festival as the new girl getting the first one under my belt. That felt good, but really to the city of Lowell, helping to manage through the construction situation, our roads were, we were able to navigate our roads and get everyone where they needed to be, the police and fire for helping to support and just happy to say that we had an incident pre-event and it went very well. So, thank you to everyone on this council.
Thank you to you.
Thank you.
As well. Anybody else?
I must say it was very well attended. Downtown was as busy as ever, so you did a good job. That's one time I'm going to say.
Is that true?
This year. This year.
Are you guys done fighting?
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, old business number A, zoning text amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In front of you are proposed zoning ordinance amendments that the planning commission approved after their public hearing at the last meeting. Is Andy there? I don't know if.
No.
You can go through before you've needed.
No. No Andy.
Okay. The biggest, the biggest issue is with the sign ordinance. If I miss something, feel free to jump in, Jessica or Suthi, or even Marty. The biggest issue was with the Supreme Court ruling a few years back pertaining to content. We cannot legislate content on signs of wars or anything of that nature. And in the past, our ordinance has allowed us to do that with Supreme Court ruling. That doesn't really allow us to do that anymore. And then basically what happened was they went, in your packet, there's a red line and a, and a, and the, and the new ordinances, and they just went through and cleaned up a lot of things in the ordinances that they felt were necessary. I don't have much more than that.
I attended both of those meetings. You guys, I think, were with me at the first one and Leah was with me at the second one. And it's really just an update to an existing zoning ordinance to comply with the Supreme Court ruling, not a lot of major changes from a city policy level, more of an update.
The biggest change was if you live on a corner lot, you can now have up to eight signs on your corner lot, four on one road, four on the other. That was, that was about the biggest change that was really made in there. Other than that, it just cleaned the whole policy up, got us in compliance with the way that it needs to be for now and so.
All right, good. Any questions for Marty? Motion to approve ordinance 2305.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Discussion. Sue.
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Eric, item B, rezoning for 111 ratio of 805 and 825 East Main, again from the planning commission.
Yes, at the last planning commission meeting, the, the, they reviewed the class from Copper Rock Construction to rezone three parts of the land located at 111 ratio, 805 East Main and 825 Main Street. Two of those are residential, or two of those were commercial properties and one of them was residential. They'd like to, to make all three as mixed-use properties. The purpose of the rezoning is to facilitate the development of 44-unit, multiple-family residential development that would include 3,800 square feet of commercial space. The recommended motion is for the city council to accept the recommendation of the planning commission who did approve the rezoning request at their meeting last week. If, if this is approved for rezoning, this would, the, the site plan would go back to the planning commission for review. However, the, the permitted use, the use that is being proposed would be permitted by right, but the planning commission would still have to review it.
Dennis.
Dennis Kemp, 1700 Lake Drive, Lowell. Question I have is the same question I raised a few meetings ago about your water supply. Do you have enough water to support 44 new units in Lowell as well as the additional units going in, going into township? I hope you're considering that before you, before you approve this. Thank you.
Ian and I could respond to that question if you'd like us to.
Yeah, we have one more.
Sure. Tyler Kemp, 28-0, Jay Nell, just want to echo Dennis's comments. I overly hope we take a holistic look at our water situation here in the town and the township as current residents are taking the burden of having limited water usage to uneven dates currently. Also want to make the case that if this development takes up parking, I prefer that M21 was not taking the brunt of having to make up for the loss of parking spaces. This is a major thoroughfare and I think it should remain that way in some fashion. That's my comments. Thank you.
All right, Mike.
Yeah, in regards to the water issue, I think there's two things to figure, remember here. The first thing is, is that we know that at some point the issue with the township's going to have to be a drought. We anticipate that that'll be relatively soon. That being said, Dan and I did look at this and we don't believe the 44 residential units will have any impact to the water supply mainly because it's residential use and some, obviously there will be a restaurant, but we don't believe it's going to do anything for, you know, that's going to trick us to where we're going to be over capacity. The issue we have now is irrigation and if you've looked at the site plans, they're going to have minimal landscaping if any at all. And that's really been what the problematic issue is at this point, but I do, I do believe that long-term, the issue will be resolved.
I live at 818 East Main Street and I'm too concerned about the water because we have to leave our water running 24 hours a day in the winter time because the water mains are in such bad shape and they'll freeze. And then the rest of the time, the pressure's so low that it takes me about 10 hours to water our lawn because we can only run one sprinkler at a time and I have to just keep moving it around our yard. And if I turn on the washer or the dishes, I lose the sprinkler. The other issue is they're not providing all of their parking. So, right now, we have to back out of our driveway onto Main Street. If there's cars parked in front of our house, it becomes very, very dangerous. Last year, our neighbor tried to pull out off of Grove when all the cars were parked in front of our house. She couldn't see and was broadsided. They took her in an ambulance. Her brother came to pick up her kids. He tried to pull out and he was hit. And we're backing out, so that's very concerning to me. They're planning 22 spaces, I think, for the restaurant. I assume 10 of those will be staffed, so that leaves 12 for customers. They're assuming one car per bedroom, but a lot of those one-bedroom apartments would likely be married couples with each having their own car. So, they're already planning on 17 cars from the apartments on the street. Now, you count guests and all those cars they're not accounted for, that's a lot of cars on Main Street. Since they raised the speed limit on Main Street, we had one car in front of our house totaled by a distracted driver because the lanes aren't that wide. And we had another car in front of our house sideswiped by a, by a hit-and-run driver. There are no, there are no crosswalks. We all know the, the drama over can you stop the pedestrians? Can you not stop the pedestrians? You're going to have people parking on our side of the street wanting to go to that restaurant, wanting to go to that apartment building. It's 40 miles an hour down there. That's going to just create a dangerous situation.
Thank you. Any other discussion on a rezoning request? Recommended motion to accept the planning commission recommendation and approve the rezoning.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Another discussion before we vote. Sue.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes, and I want to explain why I'm voting yes because the parking and those other items are not in our bellywink at this point. That's, all I'm voting for is I want to see something go ahead there and the planning commission will iron out all the details. So, yeah.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
For the reasons that I've just stated, yes.
And Mayor DeGore.
No.
So, can I address some things real quick?
Yes.
Couple different things. Planning commission that night, we were in a big meeting and we have big meetings in here all the time. Bruce tabled it until September, which I don't quite understand why we would table something for two months when we easily could get to it next month. The other thing is, is the more I got thinking about this, and I did listen to your concerns that night sitting on planning commission, correct? Three things. We, we heard that sewer was an issue, correct, that night? If a development goes into that site, I would almost hope that we would take Avery Street and move it ahead. While doing Avery Street, if there is a sewer problem, we can address it while we rebuild Avery Street, right? We know water pressure's an issue. Same thing, we can use that time to address the neighborhood's water pressure with a project that would be taking place if the planning commission grants it. Thirdly, with 44 units there, a restaurant or retail space, it almost forces MDOT to take a hard look at that speed limit and possibly, because now we're going to call it a high-density neighborhood, put it back down to 25 like we have here on our Main Street. I heard a lot of things that night when we were talking and most people really weren't opposed to something being there. It was more the, the on-street parking and how dangerous it is, but if we can get MDOT to slow it down and possibly even convince them eventually to put a light down there with maybe, you know, the developers' help, if they exceed, then I think it would be, you know, something that would be good. What I'd like to do as our board is ask the chair of planning commission to put this on the August to, to go, to see how it plays out. Copper Rock's got financing, money sitting, they're paying interest on it. Two months, I think, is a little extreme, especially when we're all used to doing big meetings. So, I think if we could agree to that, hopefully Mike that can reach out and, you know, ask Bruce if we can put that back on.
Marty, if, if we delay it, does that not then delay, I'm not looking forward on when we have to have the public forums and.
No.
Meetings or?
No.
Something different for us?
Jessica's got the answer to that.
They are allowed procedurally to take it. It's tabled currently.
Yep.
To remove it from the table and place it on a different monthly meeting agenda so long as it's been known as part of the project has, so it's not an issue. And this is just really a recommendation to them, if not.
Yeah, it's just a recommendation that, you know, go back on just so, they either get a, they either get a yes or an no. And.
Well, I also don't think it's fair to them to wait two months for an answer. That's going to affect their engineering and design and planning when it could easily be handled in, well, it would be three weeks, right?
Yep.
I don't think the length of any board's agenda should be a determining factor on what business you attend to. And I think if there's business, we've had meetings that are 14 minutes and we've had meetings that are like hour amount of time and it shouldn't be. If there's business to be done, the business should be done. In this case, I think you're unnecessarily burdening Copper Rock and the public who are involved by delaying it a month really without cause. If it was like when the line check was delayed till July, that was at the developer's request, right, not at planning's request, I understand that. I don't agree with tabling just to lighten an agenda, so I would be supportive of that being on the August agenda.
Thank you.
Tyler.
Yeah, just real quick for the comment that may have been in here. MDOT does not control speed and the state law is Michigan State Police, but it is a joint effort between the community, MDOT and MSB. Just for clarification. Thank you.
But it would force all people to take a relook at that.
That would be up to the local community to assess that. In most cases, it may go up just because when you're looking at the speed limits, most people do go faster and that results in a higher speed. So, just be careful what you ask for.
All right, anything else on that? We're good?
One other item to add, the issue pertaining to the water main and the sewer main, the flow in those areas for the main, now the issues that people are having are their lateral connections. The mains, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but everything I, my understanding is that the mains for both the water and sewer are working fine.
That's my understanding too, but with these recent comment for 818, I'm just going to make sure the water department gets out there and checks that just to verify it.
Right.
All right, well, let's move to the harassment ordinance, 2306, new business number A. So, we're good with, and Mike, you, I, I would, no, I think, so I think.
No, Jessica can.
Talk to Bruce and then.
Yeah.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
Click. Thank you.
Yep. All right, Mike's, arrest.
At our June 19 to 2023 six-monthly meetings, police department expressed their interest in creating a harassment, a local harassment ordinance to address some, better address some issues they are facing. We can enforce the Michigan statute for misdemeanor criminal harassment under the local ordinance. However, some of the issues the police department is facing doesn't necessarily fall in line with the Michigan statute. Our police department has researched other community statutes and worked with the attorney to craft municipal harassment ordinance. We, we can enforce locally rather than having Kent County prosecutors enforce for us and it also meets what we believe our needs are at this time. This is a misdemeanor, this would be a misdemeanor offense. It would allow officers to make arrests as needed and would set a $500 bond for fine for each violation. I did attach ordinance 2306 for your review and city attorney can explain anything if you have any questions. Recommending that Lowell City Council approve 2306, Twixdale's Local misdemeanor harassment ordinance is granted.
500 bucks seems like a pretty good whack. Is it up to 500 or it's?
Yeah, the officer has discretion usually, the officer of discretion, when they, when they issue the violation, it can be anywhere between $100 to $500.
And, and the purpose here was to provide a good whack, so.
I am, yeah.
So, as you can see, I mean, that was a good summary by Mike. This is a, a new section in 13-69 and, and it is not, it's an exception to those things that will be treated as something less than a misdemeanor. So, it gives them a lot more authority to really get the person to stop the behavior. Is there anything you want to add to that, Chief?
I just, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, you.
We should have Mike.
Yes, sorry. I don't think I added much to what Mike said. This adds a new section 13-69 regarding harassment and it constitutes a misdemeanor.
Yeah, I, I know Aubrey, she did a lot of work on this, asked our detective, a few other departments around the area, what they did. She typed, she, I know she took three of them, kind of put them together and gave to Jessica to kind of refine for us, but I've got no problem with this ordinance. It's a little, it's, the only problem I would, I was looking at today and didn't really think about until today was the, might be a freedom of speech issue for what you consider an insult. So, that's the only thing I had, that's the only concern I had, which is a small one, but this would be, from my experience here, this would be rarely used except for those extreme cases which we just went through, so.
Yep, and I think we can cross that bridge when we come to it.
Right.
All right, any other questions for Chief or Jessica?
I had a couple of questions, like number seven, violation of chapter 11.5, historical district of this code. What does that reference to?
That'd be attorney.
I'm sorry, where are you looking at?
Well, I'm just looking at, it says violation of chapter 11.5, historical district of this code. So, do all of these criteria fall under this particular section 27-8?
So, what we had to do, it's always messy when you amend an ordinance, right? Because some of them constitute municipal civil infractions, some constitute misdemeanors. So, I know this isn't particularly clear if you don't see the whole thing at once, but what this says is that this is a list of infractions that constitute municipal civil infractions. But what you'll notice if you look closely is that it accepts this edition. Okay, so I know it, again, if you went and looked at each one of these, most of these are going to continue to constitute civil infractions, but we've carved out this new section to then make sure it is a misdemeanor. So, it's kind of like a puzzle. I know it doesn't read.
I'm not the lawyer completely, but, okay.
That's what lawyers do.
Yeah. When I, when I seen what was written, I went, well, that's a lawyer thing.
Yeah, there's really no better way to do it, short of just, you know, attaching every single provision that's proposed, so.
Right. Any other questions? Motion for ordinance 2306, local misdemeanor harassment. I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Tree ordinance, Dan, 2307.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A little back earlier this year, we came across the issue of the city's ordinance on trees not covering all the aspects of public, about maintaining them and their public weight regulations in the, in the community. Some issues that were lacking was proper tree planting procedures, putting tree in the right place, types of trees allowed, and a process for review of the removal of trees and replacement fees. So, last day, this past April, we had Blooms and Works review and help us in the Arbor Board review and update the existing ordinance that has been completed in front of use the, the ordinance plus our redline version of the original ordinance, which is probably more red than anything else, but that's the way it turned out, so. Some of the significant changes included is defining and establishing the tree fund for replacement of trees. Although fees is mentioned in the original ordinance under tree removal and replacement, it was not clearly defined. The new ordinance explains the tree fund, how the fund is established, and then fund usage reporting procedures back to city council and to the Arbor Board. There's also changes to the review of existing trees and procedures for recommendations for removal and replacement to the city manager by staff with chance for follow-up with arborists or landscape architects. There's also some information put in the, right, for the cooperation between Public Works and Lowell Light and Power to work together to review and recommend tree trimming or removals for those trees that may affect public departments. We have some tree trimming and removal requirements. We have now a procedure for the public to dispute any tree trimmings and removals. There's more definitions on lawful areas to plant trees in the right way and what trees can go in which spaces so that we don't get toll-bearing trees under power lines or over water lines or what have you. We have a list now, a large list of species of trees that are allowed to be planted on public property and those that are prohibited. And then we have better tree trimming standards, protection standards for constructions and there's more defined procedures for removals. And then again, as I said before, we have a, a better definition on the rate for replacement and how the fees established. And I just want to point out too, this is for public property trees. What people do on the private properties, what people do on the private property, this just pertains to trees on city property or in city right way.
Did I highlight this ordinance last week? No, I didn't.
Yeah, a little bit.
All right, well, I don't know.
It wasn't, it isn't.
That's true, it's new, you're right.
Make, make a motion, make it retro happen.
Yeah, this is, this is for information for today with a follow-up at the next meeting where either Malia or Andy from O'Leary will work so they can be available to help discuss it and answer any questions and we can finalize it. If you need more information, we can get that provided to you.
Can we give that version to Charlie for this board, to review before we all come back?
Yeah, so we have Brian and I both reviewed it briefly.
Arbor Board along with Light and Power, who's all worked together well to go through this and come up with what we have and I think that's. Hello, and Jim Reagan, 753 Currell Drive and a member, longtime member of the Arbor Board. Just going to do some name dropping and just give you a quick history of the Arbor Board. Been around since 2007, so this is the first time we've had a major ordinance rewrite and, and I've been working with Williamson Works and Dan and Light and Power on this, so I'm in concurrence with it. Just introduce a name dropping to some of the people that have been on the board, some of them have been members of the city council, but Dana Chase and Diana Ware, Jim Paul and Jim Hodges served, Don Ford, Sharon Ellison, Jeannie Shores, Mary Lane LaConzie, Matt Silverman and Lynn Groves and Jim Salisburyo. We still are always in need of volunteers, probably just like the planning commission and other, and other boards and within the city. One of the other things that this ordinance does is it also reiterates the participation as far as a tree city USA. Need four things for, for a tree city, you need an Arbor Board. You need a tree ordinance, you need to celebrate Arbor Day and $2 per cap to part of the budget. So, I'm asking to consider when you review this to have our, you guys know the population of the city of Lowell better than I do, but oh, like $9,000 would be ideal. Previously, we've gotten our budget from not only the city Lowell, but Lowell Light and Power and the Cable Board, Look Fund and the Lowell Community Fund has also given the Arbor Board money in the past. Some of the things we've done in the past since 2000, we, Arbor Board's been around since May 7, 2007, I think, around now, so about 16 years. We had a big tree contest, we planted trees around the dog park, Creek Site Park, Ball Field, Four East Fairgrounds, Bowls Road and Stony Lake and the cemetery along Oldwood. And lastly, just want to thank Dan Zarnaki from the city for helping out with all this over the past, well, since he's been here, Pier Beesman Light and Power and Williamson Works and Malia Rextrow and Andy, Andy Moore were very helpful. It's, it's really nice to have, you know, I've been around the city a long time, that we had, we had the big pots and we redid the sidewalks in the 90s. We put the grates in, put the trees in. It does soften up the, the walkability of, of your downtown when you have trees. We need to educate the public as far as when they plant their trees not to put it under power lines and put it by their sewer lines and maybe we can do a better job of that. I'm going to, I'm kind of semi-retired and have more spare time than I used, but it's, it's really nice to be a tree city USA. Some of the compromises we've done is just as far as even when we plant the trees, trying to keep them power line friendly. to keep them power line friendly, that's probably been the biggest thing. When you, when you guys look at trees, you know, I've had comments that, oh geez, we can't cut that, you know, we shouldn't trim that tree down, it would look ugly. It's amazing how resilient these trees are. They can look ugly when you cut them, but they keep growing. Sometimes the ones we don't like that are messy, we've kind of come to the, we've got some trees that are kind of prohibited on the public properties because they're messy, big leaves, hard to go down the drains, plug the sewers and things like that, so we're trying to be more friendly with that as far as the type of trees that we planted. Wasn't always hands-on when we hired an arborist to come in or a tree, a tree company to come in to plant the trees. Like on Bowls Road, they planted some trees that took off higher than we thought, but that's a nice problem to have, you know, that we have to temper our trees and, and let's kind of re-rewrote the ordinance and. Any questions for me at all?
I know you're a thorough guy. Are you happy with?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I worked with Williamson Works, there's nothing, you know, nothing jumped out at me that I was opposed to at all. On about, I think, when, when utilities companies came in, they cut one tree down, I think the ordinance maybe said we had to put two of them in, or maybe that's one of the other townships, cities that had that. I don't think really Lowell had that, but, and the other thing we need to review is the five or seven trees that, you know, it changes the cost of putting the trees in. They're kind of expensive, the bigger diameter, the beautiful ones that you get, so it doesn't take very much to use up nine thousand dollars. But you get seedlings, you know, from conservation clubs, you know, for a buck of tree, you know, so you can get it pretty cheap, but, you know, to install, and you got, you got to water. The other thing is, over the years, the budget that we use, some of it's come from the Look Fund and the Cable Fund, but it doesn't always have to come from the nine thousand dollars, because sometimes it's maintenance that can be used as far as the cost that you spend on your, on your trees too. I've got a chance to do this very often, but I thank you for being on the city council and doing all that you do.
I do want to thank Jim for leading the that board and Dan and Ryan teaching from Lowell Light and Power. We worked really well as a team and a lot of questions came up during the conversations to get this done, so it's been a slow process, but it's been a thorough process as far as I'm concerned. So thank you all.
Thanks, Doug. Is everybody content with revisiting the actual ordinance at our next meeting, or you want longer to go over it?
No.
Two weeks then?
Sure.
And get on again?
Yep.
Go right in there, maybe five hours of reading and twenty-two minutes.
All right, Dan again, Grendel and Shepherd.
If you look at my really log for lower than more yet tonight.
That's all right, I got your old list right here, we'll see how you do.
Okay, let's see. Grendel Drive and Shepherd Boulevard, this, this year on our street proof project, those are the, those are the streets for resurfacing. Started out first to be Grendel and then in, on our seven-year list, but then when we looked at the proximity of Shepherd Boulevard to this, and they needed repairs on Shepherd and with the street surface and the drainage, we were able to find a few extra dollars to throw to, to adding that to our project. The main portion of the work consists of removing all the old existing worn-out pavement, repair the gravel sub-bas that failed, and then pave the street back. Grendel will see resurfacing of the entire street, even though some of it was done eighteen years ago, about from one end to the other, and then there'll be some gravel repairs, drainage work, curb repairs. But on Shepherd Boulevard, entire street will be done, the street drainage will be adjusted so that the majority of the drainage will be redirected directly to the east side drainage swale that's towards the bottom of the street. Now, a lot of it comes off in a couple of yards before that and works its way down, if we found a way to extend that down and avoid going into the yards as much as possible. We don't anticipate any underground utility work on either street. We sent out specs and three, three companies bid on it, a little bid from Michigan Paving Materials. Just to note, Michigan Paving Materials did our G-Drive paving last fall, late last fall, and while that didn't turn out perfectly, they did step up this spring, made the proper repairs, had no additional cost to the city. And my past experience working with them, working with them when they were called wooden paving, had all been positive.
And?
Yes.
Last fall, wasn't that a temperature thing that caused the?
Yes, in a way, in a way that it was, if you recall, probably the last beautiful day of November, it was the last day of the paving companies were open, they all had projects to do, they came, did ours first, because it was first on the list, and they were in a hurry to leave to get to their next job, they rolled it, it was too hot, and that's what caused the problem. So.
It wasn't that they made good.
They made good, they came back and they fixed it the right way.
Questions for Dan?
Motion for the improvement bid project from Michigan Paving Materials, one more motion.
Support. And we're adding a street, I think that's worth mentioning out loud and repeating.
Multiple times, yep.
The street that really is.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, now Grendel and Shepherd Drive.
Well, to do that work, we need oversight by engineers on it. I think on this street more than any of the other ones that we've done, there's going to be a lot of areas where they're going to have to keep an eye on it, make sure the drainage goes where it needs to go. That's going to take, it'll take some work for that. The rest of the paperwork and everything else is typical of what they do for us. Williams and Works indicated they can do this, plus the material testing included for a cost of forty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. Again, I foresee a lot of field adjusting on, on the drainage up through there, so we collect just as much of the stormwater as we can, especially on the Shepherd portion of it.
Questions for Dan on that?
As it comes down Grendel and hits Jackson Street, are you trying to direct it more down Jackson or going up towards north and coming down to the basin?
As it's coming down which street?
Yeah, it's coming down Grendel, all the water from all the rain and it runs into Jackson, are you, where, south, are you trying to get it up around?
It's, it's going to go where it currently does, which puts it, there's some basins down there in the intersection, and we do Jackson Street, look, in a couple of years we catch it as best we can. And again, the, the increase in water coming down, that should be the same as what it's been.
Right.
Coming down Shepherd, we're hoping to collect it all even better and keep it from.
Yeah, Shepherd's where it's going to come down more with the now, is in those people's yards.
Well, we're putting in some basin, we are putting in a basin on Shepherd, plus a little ways up the hill we're going to collect it and shoot it across with the culvert tile, hopefully catch most of it down.
We had a resident come to us, was that?
Two years ago?
Two, three.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some drainage issues up there off the road, just because of the lay of the land and.
And it just washed away, there's nothing there.
Oh, I'm glad we're imploding, man, instead of having to go back and correct it. And we're adding streets, remember that?
Took a while, but we've got to.
We're doing it.
For that, I'll make a motion to, for forty-five thousand, ten dollars, to hire Williams and Works.
I'll support.
Questions, discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
All right, ten more, Dan.
Ten more.
Model one, Brook design.
I have one, Brook, well, these were, neither of these were on our list. We were looking at through the DDA area of what, where roads need work, and Otto Street pops up quickly. So we looked at the resurfacing Otto Street from Hudson to Brook, utilizing DDA funding. We also looked at the connecting street of Brook, and upon review, we determined that Brook is also in need of, badly in need of resurfacing as well. So we need to go off for bids on the construction work for that. Proposed construction, again, would consist of removing all the old bad asphalt, fixing any concrete that might be broken or settled, and then end the gravel base and putting it back. Williams and Works has given us another proposal for design services with nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars total, of which the DDA will be responsible for eleven thousand, five hundred of that, because that is the Otto Street portion. Again, this is more work to this upcoming year.
More streets. All right, motion for that Williams and Works engineer.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Discussion. Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeWor?
Yes.
And after the vote, is, will this happen next year?
Yep. Well, all that, all that work and the next one we're talking about, the design this year, so next year, since we can pull in to give them that.
We always budget the street the year before so we can start the design, and then we'll do the construction in the summer of twenty-four.
Thanks.
All right, street improvements for twenty-four.
Okay, twenty twenty-four, go along with three constructs of Washington Street and its utilities. Seven-year street plan has aggressive construction season scheduled for twenty-four in that same area, the, for next year, the Lafayette Street, and then all the connecting streets from Lafayette and Jefferson are look to be resurfaced. While North Jefferson was paved in seven, twenty seventeen, Monroe's schedule to be paved sometime this fall, the twenty twenty-four street improvement project will complete a huge area of needed street resurfacing in our community. For the twenty twenty-four street improvement projects, we propose the following, Lafayette from King to the north end, Pine Street from Lafayette to Monroe, Grant Street from Lafayette to Washington, Marzac from Lafayette to Monroe, North Street from Lafayette to Jefferson, King Street from Washington to Jefferson, this year, King Street will be redone from Lafayette to Washington, I feel like that's not included, High Street from Monroe to Jefferson, and then Sherman Street from Monroe to Washington. That's a lot of work and a lot of area now through there, so it's going to be, it's going to be interesting. The construction work, again, is going to remove, replace the existing asphalt and the gravel that's necessary and any concrete that's in need of replacement. Well, most of these streets are typical, street curb gutter work. Two of them are now Sherman and Pine, they're narrow, they have minimal drainage, these streets will need to be looked at extra just to make sure in the design process that it's handling the water and traffic properly. Preliminary construction estimates for this work, for the asphalt work, will be about a million dollars next year for just those streets. Williams and Works has proposed a design services for soil borries and the actual design for the work, plus all the documents and giving us out for bid for eight, two thousand dollars.
Any questions for Dan on that, Williams and Works quote? Nice to see eight more streets on the list. Motion to accept that, Dan?
Make the motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Dan, I had one question regarding the Monroe project, have we come to the point yet where we, if we discovered any lead pipes replacements?
Not yet, we're right to that point. I'll just give you an update, last Friday, the lower main was done. Last Friday, they flushed the line, filled the water, you have to flush that at a certain velocity to make sure everything's out of it. Took them most of the day on Friday, and then they, they fully pressurized it and left it go over the weekend to give it a chance to settle down, let the air out and everything. Today, they introduced chlorine into the system, they got the pipe full of chlorine up to the needed amount so that it can be disinfected, and then late tomorrow, we'll flush that off, and then after that, we'll start doing some testing of it. Once it passed testing, then we'll be looking at getting into service line work. I believe their intention is to do the service, service line work after the sanitary sewer has been installed, and they figured that, they started that late last week, and they figured that's a four-week process to get up the street in the sanitary, then they'll drop back, and then they'll finish fixing the sanitary and the service line those at the same time, which is about four weeks out. And at that time, we'll be looking at the service lines.
Is this your official last report on that?
No, it's official.
No, yeah, maybe it was.
Okay, all right, just, I know, the date's close.
That was sad.
I know.
All right, social district request.
Yep. The city of this state requests from Red Barn Merkin Tile, Via Love Wine, regarding being added to the social district. If you recall, Red Barn Merkin Tile is partner of Love Wines in Luddington to sell their product directly here in Lowell. Red Barn Via Love Wines will be able to sell products out the door. Additionally, they will be able to have wine tasting events and sell out of glass at two seventeen West Main. In order for Love Wines to receive a social district endorsement on their liquor license, they must fall within the district boundaries and be approved by, via city council resolution. Two seventeen West Main does fall in the district boundaries and attaches resolution sixteen twenty-three for consideration. If approved, if approved, I will request the city manager and city attorney address any clerical issues with the resolution which might occur with the liquor control commission with this resolution rather than having to bring it back to you for, for more approvals. I'm recommending the approval of resolution sixteen dash twenty-three to allow for Love Wines to participate in social district at two seventeen West Main as presented.
Why would the Michigan Liquor Control Commission consider not allowing it?
I've been here.
Eddie, erase them.
Ten months.
They changed.
They changed. I literally had eighteen hours to rework a huge part of what we submitted. Now, my partners in Luddington and we're here, and we made it fairly, so, trust me.
I'm just, just, I just thought they had something solid that they were just going to do this.
No.
We always have to change something, Jim, on every, every time we do something with them, we always have to change something, whether it's a map, whether it's a word or a resolution, whether it's an address, I mean, it just, who knows?
Any other questions before we get ourselves in trouble on here?
I make a motion to be accepted.
Sixteen dash two-three.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Questions for Red Barn Merkin Tile?
Good luck.
Geez, thanks. Here, Suzie?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeWor?
No, I'm just kidding, yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
I will be sustained from the vote.
Streets would be mine.
Yep, I received a request recently about a consideration for additional street sweeping throughout the city this summer. This is due to the heat pile in some areas where there's continued road deterioration. The city normally sweeps in the early spring and usually in November when the leaves fall. An additional sweeping now will help when the fall sweep occurs. We asked our contractors to say a sweep were closed for the additional sweep. The total cost of the sweep is ten thousand, six hundred dollars. Of this, eleven hundred dollars will be reimbursed via MDOT, as this will include Main Street. The remaining costs will be split evenly between the local and major street fund. Funds are available in these accounts and will not impair any of the upcoming street projects. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve an additional street sweeping with same sweep, but it costs not to exceed ten thousand, six hundred dollars.
Seems like an easy one, any questions for Mike?
Would this be just this year, or is this what they want to do yearly and now we're putting it in the budget?
No, we'll do it this year. I know I've had some chats with the DPW staff about other options, maybe for next year, so this would just be for this year.
I wouldn't be opposed to having two of them.